I'd be one of them to be back in our place.
The floating idol and everyone's like.
Okay, like the call of the January 23th Planning Commission meeting in order. Let's do the bio.
Put flag to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Brzezowski, yes, Clark.
Here.
Fredericks.
Yes.
Height. Edman.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Snyder.
Here.
Thorne. Weber.
Here.
Okay, we had notification from Thorn, Height, and Brzezowski that they weren't going to be able to make it. Can I get a motion of excuse? Okay, we have a motion by Newman.
Second.
Second by Clark. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Looking to approve the agenda.
And will we approve the agenda as written?
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Snyder, second by Newman. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Agenda is approved as submitted. Next is to approve the minutes from our last meeting on, way back in September 26th. That looks good to me. I didn't see anything to change.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Weber.
Second.
Second by Clark. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Our minutes are approved. Public hearing, we have none. Respondents, we have none. Call to the public, we'll be addressing you at our new business item B, so we don't need to do that at the call to the public, which gets us to new business item A, Metro Service Recognition.
So, oh well.
Yeah, we even got you something official.
Oh.
So.
That looks nice.
For all of the many years of service.
Thank you.
And invaluable it put into forming our community, we'd like to formally say thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I've heard to serve for the 26 years.
That's why it says decades in there. Decades of service.
Yeah.
Tough act to follow, big shoes to fill.
Oh, yeah.
Well, you guys are gonna be great. Cap the slot for the last 26 years and sure we'll support the board in the future and do a fine job too.
Yeah, our master plan is good and we'll keep updating it.
And an honor to be able to maintain and shape our community, which is what planning does.
Exactly.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Couldn't have done it without you.
So far so good. Let's not screw it up.
All right, that takes us to the new business item B, Amendment to Zoning Ordinance, Daycare, Education, School Use in RM1 Multi-Family Residential Zoning District. And we have someone representing the organization that's Behavior for All, I think, yep. So, please come to the microphone, introduce yourself, and tell us about your project.
Hi, I'm Laura Plassey. I'm a behavior analyst. I provide applied behavior analysis services to children. Most of the children I serve are children with autism. Currently, there's a lot of people in the area who service young children, so ages three to six, three to 10, and then once the kids get to elementary age, there's less people in the area who service them. I currently provide in-home services to families, so I go to their homes and I support the families there, and I go into schools and I support my clients there. The gap that exists right now is a place for us to practice what it's like to be in school outside the home, and a place for them to have after-school care, after-school support, and after-school services in the form of social opportunities that would be available to neurotypical children. So that's my goal, and Behavior for All is to create an opportunity to do that. In explaining my vision, the Shepherds of the Lake Church wanted to be able to pair with me and work together in order to accomplish this, both by having their youth group be buddies and friends with my clients, in addition to I have personal contacts at the high school across the street, and there's a lot of carryover there. So, the next step was to be able to make that a reality, and I'm here to answer any questions you guys have about my mission, the vision of the church, and anything I can do to make this a reality.
Okay, just to clarify, can you give us the range of ages that you would be serving out of this facility?
Currently, I service children age six to 16.
Okay. So, it'd be up to age 18 would be coming to this facility, or?
So, in the special education world, at 18, you start doing adult planning transitions, and that's kind of outside my scope of practice. So, I want to be able to finish the transition into high school and help develop a strong high school presence, and then hand over to people who have more experience with the transition to adulthood.
Okay.
So, currently, that's not my plan.
So, and you wouldn't serve any adults in any scenario?
No.
Okay, because that impacts the way we structure our language and everything, so. Okay, and we saw in our packet, Carla Wartman provided a nice summary of what they're trying to accomplish here and what needs to happen to make that a reality, a feasible thing in an RM1 district.
Let's let her explain it.
Yeah, I can elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure, if you would please.
So, basically, what we heard what Behavior for All would like to do in Shepherd of the Lakes Church, this is located in the multiple-family district. It is not permitted in any capacity right now, so we're here to consider different ways that we could make this happen if the Planning Commission would like to pursue that. So.
Can I ask a question about what you just said? Not allowed in any capacity. Does that mean it's not allowed in any district?
In this district, it's not permitted.
Oh, in RM1.
When I say in any capacity, I mean permitted by right, special use or accessory use. It doesn't fall in any category, so they can't go anywhere in the district right now.
Is there other districts that allow that?
Um.
I'm just thinking we could steal the language.
That's, you know what, that's actually a really good question. I'm pretty sure that we looked into it, and it's just wherever regular schools would be allowed right now.
I think residential.
Yeah, so single-family residential is typically where.
Just not multifamily.
Right.
Yes.
And the church is considered multifamily?
It's in RM1 districts.
Churches are typically found in residential districts, and yeah, the way the ordinance is written is the church is allowed in the multiple-family district here, but the institutional use of like schools didn't make it to the multiple-family districts.
Gotcha.
So, basically, we need to add a special land use that would allow.
To the multifamily district?
Yes.
Yep, so you could technically make it permitted by right. You could make it a special use where you have some authority on a case-by-case basis to, you know, negotiate with the applicant, the context of the manner in which they'll operate.
Did you guys come up with a, with a, not a suggestion, what do you call it, you know, your idea of what would be the best way to do that?
Yeah, so basically, between the three, those two and accessory use, we are recommending special use in, when it's subordinate to an existing use as well. So, we were basically addressing this specific scenario. That's the way Sally and I took it at this time, was so that Behavior for All would be able to operate in the church. They wouldn't necessarily be able to apply as a special use in their own place. They couldn't take a, you know, for rent building and operate out of there as the main use. But, this is something you can still consider, though. If you wanted to do that, we could talk about that being an option. Right now, Sally and I were recommending that we make it a special use as a subordinate use, if that makes sense.
So, special use specific to Behavior for All or for the church?
It would be, so the way it would be written is that it wouldn't just be Behavior for All, but it would be subordinate to the church, though. So whether it was Behavior for All or a similar company or person, they could come in and do it at the same church or at any church in RM1.
So, that's what you mean by subordinate? You mean it's in RM1, but you have to be a church to have that subordinate special use?
Yes, you can't be the main use at that site.
But if we give, and maybe you can help me understand, it sounds like this is a least, a less cumbersome way to go than like a conditional resort.
Yeah, I would, yes.
But if we, if we did this as you suggested, could the church have 10 other behavioral, Behavior for Us come in?
Well, and they.
Meaning would this special land use apply to, you know, could we put limitations on it that says, okay, you can do it for Behavior for All. If you want to add more of these groups that come in, you gotta come back and talk to us.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, we would draft that up however we feel is appropriate, and that's really the biggest thing is, these are, this is a great use. It benefits the community. It can also generate a lot of traffic, and it can, you know, if there's an outdoor playground, it might be disruptive. And I don't mean that in a negative way. I mean that in a way that that's what zoning is. We look into whenever a new use enters the area, what are the potential pros and cons of it, and that's why you just want that wiggle room as the Planning Commission to be able to regulate it a little bit before they're just able to be permitted.
I'm sorry, I can't remember your name.
I'm Laura.
Could I ask you one more question?
Yeah, of course.
You might have already answered this. What were your hours of operation?
So, currently, I'm proposing to be open from noon to six, so I wouldn't overlap Monday through Thursday. So, I wouldn't overlap with when the church is in session. And currently, my business plan is to see possibly four to six children at a time, so we're not talking about a lot of traffic in the area. I understand that you guys are seeing the long term, but for this purpose.
Laura, would this be a scholastic year thing, or would this be year-round?
So, a lot of times what happens with children with special needs is that they have a larger slack period or a larger time that it takes them to recover from school.
Sure.
So, I try to provide, my goal is to provide opportunities for them to engage in all of these skills that they need to practice year-round. It's not a 52-year or 52-week in a year thing. It's about 45, so there are summer breaks, but majority of the year.
And what percentage, if any, would you be taking, taking your students off campus to do other kinds of things? We've got lots of walking paths. We've got play areas. We've got other kinds of things.
So, because what I do is so individualized, I can say that right now, the clientele I have, my goal would be to do that once a week, is that we would have more adults than there are children when we leave the campus.
Sure.
And we go and explore. A lot of times, it's really important for me to bring the families with me, because sometimes families are intimidated by bringing their child who's historically had problem behavior in other areas, and showing them, hey, this is how you can go to the grocery store. This is how you can go to a public playground safely and enjoyably for your entire family and meet your child where they're at, and then keep moving forward. So, those are things we have done in the past with families. All of the clients I work with currently are in the Wald Lake School District. I don't think any of them fall underneath this city's area, but we're in this community.
I think it's wonderful working.
Thank you.
I was thinking almost the same thing, that I can't think of anything that would be bad about that. So, I'm almost wanting to ask you, have you had any issues ever that you could tell us about? Because I can't think, what would it be? I mean.
So, I've opened.
Some kid go crazy.
I've opened three clinics as like a supporting director or an assistant clinical director to these other companies before starting my own. And I'll say that in the other cities we've opened with, we've had to go through a zoning process. It's just this hybrid medical, education, kind of supporting residence, but not residence, isn't on anyone's books initially. So oftentimes, we get folded under medical, office, educational. We kind of fall under that umbrella. What I liked about working with the church is that it was a very low entrance for me. Obviously, it's not as expensive as renting a full building. Your question was, what are the?
Have you ever had any problems with any of the kids that you couldn't handle, or?
So, people in my, I have a lot of experience in both de-escalation techniques and safety techniques for the children. Oftentimes, that the children I work with are the ones who it is more difficult for the schools to approach, or maybe the children have a one-on-one adult at school, and they're trying really hard to remove that one-on-one adult, so they can work in the special ed classroom with the general teacher and adult support. So, yes, my clients have communication and problem behavior that can be emotional, but typically, if somebody's at the point where they're harming themselves or others to the detriment, those ones are put in the, like a hospital support setting, so they'd be medical personnel immediately supportive. So, that wouldn't be the clientele I'd be servicing.
Well, I can tell our Carla Wartman person that when you were talking about it, I was thinking special use all the time, so I'm glad that's what you guys are proposing, because that way, then they have to come and ask us, right? So that we know what's going on. It's just not a right, you know, and then all of a sudden, you've got, you know, way too much competition for you, and, you know, and then under the church, that was a really good idea, too, because it keeps it limited to a, and if we want to add it somewhere else, we always can, but right now, no one's asking.
Right, right.
And we did look at the closest 10 nearby communities to see how similar things were being done nearby. We put three of them in here, and to be honest, a lot of them didn't acknowledge anything like this, so that might be why Laura is running into zoning, you know, procedures everywhere she goes, because it's really just not being addressed. And we did, we put Commerce, Wald Lake, and Wixom in here. Wald Lake is very similar to the approach we're taking. They allow childcare centers, preschools, et cetera, as a special use, and they allow it when subordinate in a church. So, it's essentially the approach we're taking, and we do, if we move forward with this, we will have to come up with some sort of definition, because as Laura just mentioned, too, it's like, what is, what do we classify this as? So Sally and I could mess around with that ourselves. We could talk about that for a little bit right now, too. Is this a daycare? I think it's fair to say it's not just a daycare. It's educational. It's medical.
So, why don't we just say special needs education?
Special needs education. I'm open. I'm open to.
But do we want to limit it to that? Do we want to allow other churches, whatever, or this church at some point, to just have a daycare?
Well, I think they can, I think they can have a daycare.
Can't.
I think they can.
Can already.
Subordinate use, yeah.
This is, this.
This is adding on.
Yeah.
And if they wanted to add on some other type of activity, they'd have to come to us.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, if, so Shannon, if we gave you the parameters that we just talked about, so it's for children ages age 16 to, or six to 16, it is 12 to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday.
Did she say, did you say Monday through Thursday?
Yeah.
Currently, that's my plan.
Oh, okay.
And then I go into their homes on Fridays.
And I don't know if there was anything else. I mean, those were the key things that I, that I heard Laura speak to. Then can you craft a language for special use that we could at the next meeting?
Definitely.
I mean, is that the process?
That would be the process. All I was doing right here was double-checking whether daycares are allowed as special uses in the district. I don't believe they are. Looks like senior housing, foster care, small group homes, nursing homes, and that's about it.
I thought, oh, so adjacent to a church, we don't allow daycare?
Churches are permitted in this district, and nothing along these lines is acknowledged as special use.
If we were to, what, for instance, if Laura wanted to change, say the model 12 to six, Monday through Thursday didn't work, and there were opportunities to do things there that didn't interfere with the church activities, do we need to lock it in so tight that that's the only operating hour she has, or can we just allow the use and?
No, I think we allow the use. I don't need to think we need to get as detailed as the schedule.
Is it, is it something like, with a special use, don't they have to come to us with their plan?
Yes.
So, like, when she says 10 to 6, if she ever wanted to change that, all she'd have to do is come before us again, and we could say, she's saying, it's gotta be 10 to 6. I'm sorry. You know, that's okay. We could just allow that without having to change the ordinance.
But I, but there is something to, if we don't have any.
Right. You don't have any. Midnight sing-alongs.
Yeah, in the parking lot.
So, how do you?
Well, no, no.
How do you have reasonable time?
The boundaries, the boundaries are made when they apply for the special use. We make the boundaries at that point. We're saying they just don't have to be in the ordinance itself.
If it helps, think about the kinds of conditions, you know, you could put on it. So, if you look at page five, that list of items 1 through 10, those are Wald Lake's special use approval standards. So, you can see that they're, they give you the discretion to discuss these things, like be consistent with and promote, be compatible with the nearby environment. So, instead of saying a hard time, you would say, you would discuss as a commission, is this compatible?
Right.
Is this reasonable? Does it meet these standards?
Right.
But none of them are hard line where they don't give you any discretion.
Right.
Compatible, reasonable business hours.
Exactly, yeah, like. And then, you know, you can debate at the time, is this reasonable business hours?
Yes or no?
Yeah.
So, then once we come up with a language, we'd have to first modify the master plan to put that in our RM1.
I don't think we'd have to modify the master plan, no.
No?
No. We did, you know, of course, we want the master plan to be supportive of the decision we're going to make. Sally and I put a little thing on page two about the language in the master plan. It does not explicitly call out school uses for the multiple family residential district, but we said the Planning Commission could discuss if school-type uses resemble the intent here enough. Just because the words aren't specifically in there, I think it could be open for debate whether the school-type use is compatible.
Well, so, like, is Bible study in school-type use? I mean, you could kind of say it is.
Right.
Educational in nature?
Yeah.
Yeah, and you're triggering my memory when I was reading through all the different communities, and some of them specifically even said, like, I think they had, that question was probably raised because they would say something like, not including Bible study. Like, Bible study does not count as, you know, an educational session, or something along those lines, but.
So, we don't want to be too restrictive, but we don't want to open Pandora's box somewhere in the middle.
Right, but as a special use, I think we have the control.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's why we would recommend special use in general, so, yeah.
Well, I'd say we let her come up with the wording.
Propose language and.
Absolutely. I mean, you kind of know what we're talking about as far as, like, what you've got, the 10 things for, well, I don't know if those apply, but.
Right, we could look through them and.
Right. But whatever ones you think should apply, or maybe ones that we could discuss.
Are there any specific items that you did want to address with it, whether it's hours of operation or not? I'm fine with taking it and running with it, bringing it back next month and showing you what we, what we come up with, and then maybe that would even generate your thoughts a little bit more?
Yeah. Have you got, are you in a crunch?
Yeah, she's saying, what's your timing?
Ideally, I'd like to be up and running in the new space by July or June, July, in order to be able to support the children in the summer.
Well, we'll get this till October, no problem.
I have been working on it since August, and we attempted to do, hey, I qualified as a essential service. There is a clause in here about essential services.
Yeah.
Would that work? And through my lawyer and through the conversations that we had with the city, no, that didn't work. Hey, AA and a couple other support, not necessarily educational, but support services are provided through churches. Does what I do fall underneath that? And then the answer that I got back was no. So then that's when we went the planning, the zoning route of, hey, what could I do to make this?
Is that because it's service for fee, what you do?
The understanding I got, and again, I pay a lawyer to talk to other people.
There you go.
All the bits and pieces. The understanding I have was that because essential service was laid out elsewhere that was specifically identified as fire, electric, utilities, things like that.
Yeah.
So, it didn't go to the state's definition. And then with, as far as the service under, like, the church's mission, because what I do too closely resembles school in that there are unaccompanied minors underneath my direct care. Not unaccompanied, but the parent is not.
Right, right. Do we need to make a motion for this, or?
So, Shannon, do you have enough to go on to?
So, I'll, I'll just ask a couple follow-up questions real quick. So, are we all okay with moving forward, special use subordinate to a house of worship slash church?
Yes.
Yes.
And with that said, we'll draft up some conditions that you would, you know, refer to for the special use, and then we can, you know, mess with those a little bit once we have a list drafted up.
Excellent.
And once they come in to, what, where they request the special use, and we question them and get all those details figured out, probably in one meeting, I'd imagine.
I would think so, yeah.
Then what do they have to do to get that implemented?
So, that would be beyond me at that point. I'm not sure if they would get a COVO at that point.
Probably has to go to the council.
Yeah, once you guys draft up the ordinance language, you present it to the council, and we'd have to, first, we're gonna, and second, we're gonna have it actually official.
Well, that would be.
Yes, the ordinance itself.
The ordinance itself. But I mean, once we get that through, yeah.
Once they actually apply.
Okay, and it's a special use that planning wants to approve. They recommend to council that they're recommending approval, and then council will give the final okay.
Right. So, then I guess the rest of it, we probably, similar to like a permit process, they're like, have to apply at the office, and then it'll be reviewed, I'm sure, by the administrator, that yes, this business does fall underneath the criteria that we just established, and they would have to be the approval. But that'd be guidelines that they'd be laying out in the ordinance.
Right, so first we need the ordinance, and that would go to council, and then?
And then probably hand the power over to the administrator to make the decision, because we've already set the guidelines.
Right.
What qualifies as an acceptable placement.
Then they'd come back with a special use request, and then we'd approve that, send that to council.
We're opening the ordinance up, then we have to have a public hearing, too.
Right.
So, we've got to include that in the next meeting as well.
Well, we schedule it at the next meeting.
Yeah, so for their time, it'd be.
Yeah, totally right, yeah.
We need to.
It's gonna be close.
Get the language right the first time.
Oh, yeah. If I may, my suggestion might be, if you had like language next month, and you're moving to a public hearing, if you anticipate after the public hearing, sending it on up to council for complication of the new ordinance language, you could, at the time of the public hearing, allow the applicant to start the application process, to get her application in, to try to get onto agendas, because council will leave before you will meet again, and they may have already approved that language, and she may be on the agenda for the meeting immediately following council for planning, which would be a couple weeks later, which would keep the process moving in a timely fashion.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sounds good.
What she said, that's why she gets her own desk.
Right.
I said I had to be nice to her.
Fade off.
Okay, any more discussion on this agenda item?
Thank you very much.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Laura. We'll make this happen. It's good work you're doing, and.
Yes.
Yep.
We'll keep it going forward.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
All right, that takes us to.
You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to.
As much fun as we have here.
I do have a little one at home.
Oh, okay.
Okay, that takes us to item 10, Pending Business, which we have none, and then back to Old Table Business. We need to still appoint a board member as a liaison to the ZBA. Without Patrick being here and everything, I don't, I don't think we can really.
Leave it table till next month.
Action that one, so yeah, I think we'll just have to leave that on the, on the table. All right, so that takes us to Liaison Reports. All right, Aaron, you're on stage for council.
So, this last meeting was actually pretty quick, it was pretty nice, but it was very important. So, we did actually have our audit report presented to us, too. Overall expenses was, it's good. We're all in a very good shape. We didn't overspend. We have appropriate amount of funds set aside, much moving forward, planning, so we did a really good year. We didn't spend too much. We didn't raise our millage rate again, so we're right on track for another good year as well. So, that was a very key moment of, yeah, hey, good job, Jennifer.
Yeah, good controls. That's the other.
Good team of players, taking care of the, count the beans, if you will. And then we had a couple, a few committee appointments filled, like Leia, we filled that, whatever on board, and then we head out over to the public, so pretty, pretty quick meeting as well.
Great, okay, thanks, Aaron. All right, under Parks and Rec, we had a meeting Monday on Parks and Rec. We're lining up all of our events for 2025. First one coming up is the Easter Bunny Luncheon on April 12th. Got the Easter Bunny all lined up, and we're all scheduled. Got the Easter Bunny all lined up, and we're all scheduled at Richardson Center, that's all good to go. Got our Tuesdays in the park, dates set, and then we are going forward with starting a farmer's market on Tuesdays. It's gonna actually, will coincide with our Tuesdays in the park, although it'll go, every Tuesday, we're planning to go from beginning of June to the end of September, and do them a little later. We're looking at doing, like, a probably 3 to 7 o'clock kind of time, because a lot of people who work can't make it to the ones in Wald Lake, and a lot of them that happen during the day, and then for the third Thursdays, where we have our Thursdays in the park, we'll have the farmer's market going. We already have, I want to say, probably nine or 10 vendors interested, so we'll have some pretty good participation prepared out the gate.
Where's it gonna be, over at Richards?
It'll be at Clare Mill Park, where we have the Tuesdays in the park, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it'll be in the same setup where they put the vendors during the corn roast, basically, along the path there mostly.
All right.
So, that's...
So, it's gonna be Tuesdays, starting what?
It'll be every Tuesday, starting beginning of June, till, we're looking at, till the end of September. And seem to be getting some good interest in that, and then we'll fill in with the rest. We'll have our fishing contests and corn roast as usual, and all the other events that we always do, and do very well. So, that's what's going on in the Parks and Rec world.
Cool.
All right, we don't have a ZBA, water management.
Yes.
Is that also ice management?
I wish.
Water is...
I know. The ice has been doing great so far this year, a lot better than last year. We have had, nothing solid, but we're looking at a couple of things. Well, one that I think has more promise than another, one is we've got a member looking at something called a septic genie. I don't know if anybody's heard of those, but they're four, like, it costs about $400, and I think you have to have a technician to put it in your septic tank. But it is something that helps break down the biomass in a septic tank that does less damage. So, it's a way of extending the life of a septic tank and protecting the environment more so, since, you know, since the mass gets broken down by this machine. So, we're looking at that to, first off, make sure it's not a skyhook, and to see how feasible it is to suggest to some of the folks that still have septic tanks, that if you don't want to take the big bite quite yet, and hook up to sanitary sewer. And another one is, he's also looking at what we call an equal harvester. I know we've got a harvester out there, but this one is supposed to be a machine that eliminates the need for herbicides. It's designed to pull up weeds by the root, as opposed to cutting them. There's a couple of different places, they're made in Wisconsin. So, of course, we'll be hitting the village up for a mass field trip for the water board to go ride one of these things around a lake somewhere in Wisconsin for, no.
So, what do these things cost?
About $125,000.
Does it go down the canal?
Is it, yes.
Yes, it will, it would cadap, collapse, it can go down the canal, it can go under the bridge.
Oh.
So, I mean, those are some of the bragging points about it. Does about an acre an hour.
Wow.
But the thing is, is they say, you know, here's, here's the thing about that, is that, I think we do, I think we've got 300 acre lake, but we probably do 30, 40 acres, that's all it really needs work. So, after 30, 40 hours, this machine's not going to be doing much. So, I don't know whether it's something that...
Could you rent one?
Well, you, no, they won't rent, they won't rent or lease them, but if we were to buy one of our own, and then have somebody else that needed to use it, one of the other lakes in the area that says, "Hey, does this work?" Well, for a thousand bucks, you can find out.
So, Paul, is it, though, if it, it's probably indiscriminate, so it's gonna pull up the good weeds and the bad weeds?
Yes, I, yeah, it doesn't, doesn't, no. Right.
Good weeds.
Of course, with, of course, well, of course, with the ones that are not invasive. With the cutter, you're gonna get the same thing, though. It's gonna cut the good weeds, but I mean, it doesn't, you're right, they don't destroy them.
Is there concern with disrupting the fish habitat and things like that by ripping them all out?
We'd have to take a look at that. I'm sure there's a flip side, and we're gonna be talking to Progressive, and those are the folks that currently are working with us for the water treatment and those kinds of things, so we're gonna get their opinion as well on what it would do to the lake. We don't want to turn the lake into a bathtub.
Does that make the other machine obsolete?
I don't know. I don't know that they both might not have use. So, you know, it's like, I got a pickup truck and I got a sports car, so I can, you know, I can do one or the other. So, but those are the kinds of things we'll...
Interesting.
All right. That's it for us.
Okay, any announcements?
I got one, maybe to pick people's brain on. The Commerce Market across the street from the Eagles and the Dairy Twist, that's in desperate need of some TLC. The owner of that, Sam Baco, is looking to tear it down and rebuild a nice store with a little sub of a, like a Pete Away, or a Tubby's, or a, or a Chicken to go, kind of, just a small little adjunct to the business. He bought the house that is just north of that property on Benstein. So, if you know where Gary's masonry is, the house on Benstein that's just north of that, so he owns it L-shaped now. So, he came to the Commerce Planning Commission a few months ago with a beautiful building. It was gonna flip and face Benstein, still have access to Glengarry, and at the end of the day, he couldn't get funding for it. He couldn't get financing to do it for, it's like a $2 million project. So, today, he came back and had just an informal meeting with some of us, that he can make the numbers work if he puts gas pumps on the property. So, that's kind of what I wanted to get the opinion. And the gas pumps, it would be either three or four, and they would be, his proposal is, they would be on the Glengarry side, and he would push the building all the way back to the north, so still have access to the property from Benstein and from Glengarry. We've, in the township, we probably get one a month or one every other month, somebody wants to put a gas station in, similar to what we saw on South Commerce. But they've all been a gas station, and maybe on an appropriate property, but we have to have liquor, too. So, we're not gonna put the gas station in unless we can get liquor.
Doesn't he already have it?
And we've already, he does.
Yeah.
So, this is kind of a reverse. We've always said no to that, because you can only have two liquor stores within a square a mile of each other. In any place a gas station could go, already exceeds that. So, this is a reverse. This is a liquor store that wants to put some gas pumps in front. So, I said I'd kind of get some thoughts on this. You know, we talked about traffic. I did talk to Dave Gillum a little bit to get some of his, and he had, you know, he had two concerns, traffic and environmental, and I think we can get past the environmental with the tanks and how that has to be engineered now. And the traffic they're proposing, you could only, if you're coming out onto Glengarry, you cannot turn east, so that you wouldn't get too much of a traffic. So, if you're coming out of the Glengarry side, you could only go west. If you want to come out of the Benstein side, you could go anywhere you wanted to go. So, you could flip out, get to the light, if you want. So, there are...
They'd be right across from the Dairy Twist?
Yeah, yeah.
Because I remember when we were talking about that other one, about like the 300-yard radius or something around those tanks, you know, and, and that they, there was houses there, that's what we were worried about. This would be a business where, I mean, it's an ice cream place, so kids and me.
The thing we were worried about on the South Commerce one was, like, tanks would be so close to the lake.
Yeah.
I thought it was the people that lived in those houses that I don't want to live right next door to that thing.
Well, yeah. They didn't want to live next door to a party store.
To a party store. That's gonna be open till 2:00 in the morning.
Which already is a party store.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Well, I don't know, I just, you know, you said, "What are our thoughts?"
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, right, is if it's right across the street from the Dairy Twist, they might want to have a say on that.
And they, they would, and Sam Baco, who's the owner, that's the one thing we said, is, you know, there's a few things that would, would help it. This would be a special land use, so he's gotta have, similar to what this guy would have, is you gotta have an immediate documented need, you have to have the traffic study to show that it's not gonna be dangerous or at a burden. He's got a bunch of things he has to do, but we also said it would go a long way if all the neighbors surrounding you sent a letter and saying, you know, yes, they were fine with it, or they're not. But anyway, we're, just because that's on the border, and it's gonna have to come to the village anyway, because if there's a zoning change, it would, the village would have to weigh in on it as well.
Yeah. I think the only thing I'd be concerned about is the traffic, I mean, especially during the summertime, when the ice cream place is, I mean, you, you come right off of Benstein and be waiting at the corner there before everybody gets their shot in line over at the Dairy Twist, so...
I agree.
But...
But, yeah, overall, it'd be great to have a brand-new store there compared to what we got, I mean, it's...
Yeah, that's, yeah, I agree.
So, anyway, that's, thanks for the feedback, or if there's anything else that pops into your minds, but...
And remind them we need ice for the corn roast.
Yeah.
David donated before, that's why I said that.
Okay, thanks, George.
I had something I wanted to ask about. And this is by way of my own enlightenment. When somebody has to come before us to ask for a variance, is there a fee involved? Do they have to?
Well, they go to zoning.
Okay.
For a variance, that's not us.
A variance would be Board of Appeals, but are you referring to something like today, or?
No, no. Here's, well, I'll give you a specific instance. It's a person that has, wanted to erect a shed. The shed is over the normal height limit, but it's, it doesn't violate the spirit of the ordinance. The shed is not gonna impede anybody's view, it's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna do any of the other things that the shed somewhere else is gonna screw up. But from his understanding, to come to this board, it was gonna cost some money, that would be cost prohibitive, cost almost as much as the shed itself, and he decided...
But he doesn't, he wouldn't come to us.
He wouldn't come to us.
He'd go to the ZBA.
He'd go to the ZBA.
And there is generally a fee involved, I don't know what it is here, but, yeah, there would be a fee.
Okay.
See, they would have to go to ZBA for a variance if they're not meeting ordinance, $265.
65, well, 200.
200.
200 is 65.
And that is not expensive.
That's cheap.
Yes.